It's six thirty and this is a regular scheduled meeting of the Girdon School District Board of Directors. We'll now call a meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can you satisfy that we have a quorum? With a quorum established, Casey, can you lead us in word of prayer?
Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for today. Lord, we just thank you for allowing us together here. God, we just pray for your divine intervention as we make rules and establish guidelines for our district. God, we just thank you for your hand of protection upon our students and our faculty and staff. And God, we just ask once again for that continued protection. Amen.
Amen.
Please stay with me for the pledge. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any doubt.
We've got our special recognitions.
Next up, we have some special recognition.
Good evening. So we have several staff members we want to recognize on the elementary campus. So I'm going to go ahead and start with Senator Boss. So at the elementary campus, we celebrated Mrs. Mariah Albert. If she'll come on up. Ms. Mariah does everything, everything that she's asked to without a frown or complaint. And then she always asks me what more she can do for me. And so she's been a blessing to me this year, and I'm so grateful. We get to work together this year. So thank you. Thank you so much. She always goes just above and beyond, jumping everywhere. So at the primary campus, I think she is, she's on her way. So I'll wait for her. So a teacher or a certified staff member that we celebrated, she's no longer in the classroom. But she, I promise she never slows down, is Ms. Sarah Loyce. She works at both campuses, primary and elementary, as our counselor this year. And it's her first year as counselor. So she's on and as she goes on with me, and she's been a rock star, truly. If I'm ever stressed or if I have a problem that I don't have the answer to, she's the first person I call. And she's always very gracious, and we talk each other through a lot of stuff like this. Our teacher that we celebrated at the elementary campus is new to our district. We actually stole her. She lives in Arkansas. And her name is Lauren Ross. She's teaching second grade first this year. And our students have fallen in love with her. She makes it so fun, so exciting. And she always comes up with the craziest ideas to tie in with our, our curriculum. And so the kids love it because they know, never know what they can expect. They've had tadpoles this year. They've had baby chicks this year. They've traveled to an Indian village this year. And that's not even half of it. They made fake snow, and they still get to play with that. I mean, it's just countless, and it all ties into their reading material that they're doing. So they have truly loved her class, truly loved her. And it's a kind joke. We kind of call her our Mrs. Prince from like the Magic School Girl. She's redheaded and carries that personality. So I will go ahead with our students. I'm expecting my staff member to come in. So at the elementary school, a third grader that got student of the month. She was nominated because she is just so responsible in the classroom, always helpful. Always asks if she can help the teacher or other students. And she's just really good about catching up with the teacher if she misses anything and is always taking care of her academic responsibilities and as well as being a social butterfly. So student of the month was Tenley Netheray. And our student of the month from the primary was nominated by her teacher for being always kind. It says too kind, for helping others, always doing her best, and she never gives up even when she makes the hardest challenges. She's a very bright student, and she always gives a hundred and ten percent. I never see her without a smile, ever. So student of the month at the primary for first grade with Annalee Crowley. And I'll let Ms. Hart take over. If my other staff member comes, then I'll celebrate her on Ms. Hart. Thank you.
I don't think either one of our staff members are here, but I'll tell you about them. The staff member of the month this month is Jennifer Taylor. And Jennifer Taylor is a para in our sped department, and she is like Wonder Woman. She can do everything, and she is very comfortable with our students and with our other staff members. And if we need her to do anything, she volunteers to do anything that we ask of her. So Jennifer is, she's, she's amazing. So she is our staff member of the month. Our certified faculty member is Mr. Dalton Hyde. Mr. Hyde is our science guru. He is an amazing science teacher. He is really working hard this year to cultivate a love for the medical sciences through his new AMP class that he's doing. And he is really pushing our students to dig a little bit deeper into science, scientific discovery. So he is also teaching our, one of our Project Lethal Way classes, which is medical detective. And they have been diagnosing different people with different diseases. Some that I can't even pronounce, but they have been doing a wonderful job at it. And he is also running the coffee shop in the mornings for our 21st century, during our 21st century time. And he runs the coffee shop in the morning, and he is taking twenty-five.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, nineteen students to Washington DC on next Sunday.
They leave Sunday.
Yeah, they leave Sunday going to Washington DC for close up. So he's a very, very busy man, and we appreciate all of his work, Mr. Hyde. Our next presentation will be for one of our students of the month. And this young man is not here, but he is an eighth grader, and he is one of the most polite and kind young men that we have on our campus. His name is Eric Hughes. And every time you see him, he always has a smile on his face, and he's always willing to do anything that we ask of him. He is a bit of a comedian, but he is also very fun-loving and very energetic. And so we have had a wonderful time with him on our campus this year. So Eric Hughes. And last, but certainly not least, our next student of the month is an eleventh grader. And this young lady is a tenacious leader. And I think that's, that's a good way to describe her. She is very vocal about and very passionate about things, and she doesn't mind speaking up. And that is Ms. Molly Cox. Molly has led her class through this whole year, fundraising for prom and everything. And I think Molly, she has, she remembers me for one specific thing many, many years ago in my class. But, and it was out of love. That was the first time she got de-hawked in trouble.
Like I got written up.
She got written up for talking because she's very, very vocal. But in a good way. And Molly has not stopped, and we love to see her coming down the hall because she greets everybody in the morning, everybody in the morning. So congratulations, Molly. I love you.
I thought somebody was going to hit you. At what point do you approve an agenda when you are almost through it? We have our pool of time between the, we're almost to the beginning. And I know we have people watching us and how to do leads and all that stuff. We should ask the question. At what point do you approve the agenda when you are almost through it?
Yeah, I'm not following.
Agenda for the night, we approve it when we are almost through it.
I heard what you said. I still don't understand what you're talking about.
You need to approve our agenda for the night before we go to the council.
Have we ever done that? I don't even remember where we ever.
I know we got a lot of stuff going on, and we moved it down.
Are you talking about the minutes?
Are you talking about the consent agenda?
Yes. And see, that's what we're going to be covering tonight, but we never be letting it. And we were going to get to it almost at the beginning.
Would y'all want to make a motion to move it back up?
I'd like to approve the agenda that we're covering tonight.
Can we have a motion to approve the tonight's agenda?
Make a motion. We go with our agenda that was presented in our board packet.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
She's the first. I recognize one more staff member. So this one's pretty special because she was actually one of my students. And now she works with me at the primary school. She's an ESL para. She does everything. She tutors students from K to twelve. I mean, she works with all the kids. And you just never know where you're going to find her. And if any other kids need help, she just pitches right in. So she's been amazing. And so I just want to acknowledge Cynthia Candola. Yeah, three beautiful boys back home.
And the mentor, and recognize if they want, if you want to let them know they can go if they don't.
The rest of our business, the people that was here for recognition, if y'all, y'all were born the welcome stage, but if y'all don't want to stay, we understand. Y'all can retire if y'all need to. Next item, business of discussion about the kindergarten, first grade building preliminary plan.
And well, they, they came to present the plan because, and Dr. Vaughn moved it up on the agenda in an effort to get them back to Little Rock quicker. So that's why it's on there before executive session.
I'm Dawn Shaker with French Architects, and David French is here as well. I think y'all discussed some of this last meeting. This is just a preliminary floor plan that we will submit through Leslie with facilities. Very preliminary. It may, you can change. This is just information that we put together that matches what Leslie is saying. What Leslie has given us as the requirements from the state to include in your K1. First sheet of paper you have. The first sheet that you have is just the site plan. And our footprint of the building has the same stuff in it. We're just locating this on your campus in two locations. So you kind of can see the building size and then what options we felt like you had available on your campus. And Ms. Misty and Mr. Ken, we discussed and met with them, and they kind of felt like y'all would go in this other direction here on the north side. But just so that you had some options to look at. And again, this March one deadline does not, we do not have to decide where it goes. Just want y'all to be able to see that there are locations available. So if you would like to turn to the second page, it's just a little bit larger. And I'll show you the floor plan there. What we were charged with is a list of requirements from the state. And they, based off of your enrollment, will tell us how many classrooms you need and other spaces that are required for this building. So you have a kitchen in here, a student dining. It's in purple. We will have yellow spaces, which are shared spaces. There's a fine arts, a computer lab, and a reading room and an ISS room, also health center. All of your green spaces are classroom spaces. And then pink areas are special ed. So we have self-contained classroom, a GT classroom, speech OT, and then a speech, or I'm sorry, a special ed resource room. And then other spaces that make up this building are support spaces. So administration, other offices such as counselors, and then some additional instructional classrooms are included in that. Also, what we're providing in this plan is a safe room. There's a new international building code requires that each school district, when they build on, add any sort of, any kind of building renovation or addition, we have to accommodate for a safe room. So what we're showing here in this safe room is large enough to accommodate your current enrollment. Also, what this safe room does is it is large enough to accommodate the building occupancy. So anyway, there's a little bit more discussion in that that we could talk about. But you will be covered with your safe room here. It has to be this large to accommodate the building, and then it will also take care of your whole campus here at this, at this side. The location that we placed it is to the east of your current elementary. And we pushed it to the far side of that building so that we could, we could gather the high school students as they're coming this direction. So there's a few more things to work out site-wise, just to make sure that everybody gets to where they need to go and meet all the needs for that safe room, but we will do that in this plan. We also have provided in the blue area, the future preschool. So just to, to kind of think about that if needed and in the future, if there's a preschool, moving them over or accommodating for them, that would be a separate building built at a future time. And this is just a preliminary plan. This goes to the state. And once the state reviews everything, decides if they're going to fund your project, then we come back to the drawing table, and we, we start doing some fine tuning, and we can make adjustments then. So.
Do you have a number based on the possibility of growth? How, how many children we can handle with this building?
So Leslie takes care of the enrollment numbers, and she has updated or, or what we programmed for. I'm going to let her speak to that, okay?
Whenever I was giving numbers to Dawn, I worked with two separate configurations. We did a K1 because that's what we have to submit to the addition for partnership. That's beyond how the project that they're going to set. So that number is a little bit different from what we, our, if we put in, you'll see three of those orange classrooms are labeled as multi-purpose. So we put those in so that we took them in second grade if we needed to, once the building is constructed. So it's actually set up for a K2, but anyone that's ever been here, and I have a K2.
So the K2 she's talking about would be, I mean, it would be potential growth because there's three classrooms factored in so that your second graders could move into this building. What that also did is made the cafeteria have to be a little bit larger so that we could accommodate for the total amount of students with the second graders in there, as well as the library and your kitchen space. So those three, the square footage grows whenever we add students. So it can accommodate for future second graders into this building.
So, so for kindergarten through second grade, we should be able to hold about a hundred and fifty kids. I also have, we have your kitchen and your dining spaces, library spaces. We have those sized too, so that pre-K can also use that building if they're in. We're able to construct an admission for them. So that would be two hundred. But for your K1, it was a hundred, a hundred and one students. That's what the vision's under, Mr. Bill.
Well, I guess I have a question about the safety.
Yes, sir.
It says PE space, twenty-five hundred square foot. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then it says safe room minimum equals four thousand square foot. Is that what that says?
Yes, sir. So your PE space that the state says minimum you need for the students in this building is twenty-five hundred square feet. The new building code says that you must accommodate for the occupancy of this building. So for an example, your classroom space would be an eight hundred and fifty square foot space. And technically, you could put forty kids in that classroom. But you do not house forty kids in your classrooms. And so that bumps up our occupancy of the building a little bit, which then makes us be able to accommodate for whatever this, we can fit into this building. But the good news is even if, even if where you're going is that we make that two hundred or two thousand and five hundred square feet, we could not then accommodate for your students on campus. So what this allows us to do is to take care of your total enrollment for your campus plus your staff. So what this does is we build this safe room to accommodate for your enrollment that we just spoke about that was K1, but also that includes your enrollment for your high school. And it also includes all your staff members. And so do you currently have a safe room on campus? So with this, that takes care of your whole campus safe room needs with this building. What that would then also do for you in the future is if you had to build this pre-K classroom addition, you would not have to do a safe room within that building. They could then use your safe room. So a lot of school districts are in the situation where they do not have a safe room at all. If they build one classroom, they have to make that a safe room for that classroom. So I know that's a lot of information, but, but basically the, the district or the, the state of Arkansas says, yes, you have to include twenty-five hundred square feet of PE space for what we're doing with this building. And then I have to make that a little bit larger just to accommodate for your district and this building.
What constitutes a safe room as far as the actual construction of it?
David, do you want to talk about that? He's asking the construction of the safe room versus, he mentioned a safe space. We've done safe.
That would just add the wrong phrase.
Okay, well, we've done those before. We've done safe corridors before, but a safe room is a bit different in that.
Yeah, the construction cost for a safe room, you could, you could almost double it for what it costs for a school.
I guess my question is, is like, what's the wall thickness? What's required wall thickness, ceiling? Ceiling thickness or roof thickness? Makes it a safe room?
We're doing one right now, and the detail of it is that, you know, the, the wall's probably about a foot, you know, thick. And there are precast panels that they tilt up, and then they weld these T double Ts. I don't know if you've ever seen a, a concrete deal. It has, it looks like a T, a double T. That's the roof that spans over it, and all those work together. And so far as they have to withstand a certain amount of wind pressure, like, you know, two hundred and sixty to fifty, yeah, two hundred and fifty mile an hour winds. So that concrete structure has to withstand that type of wind. When Don was talking about, you know, you can build safer places in the hallways and stuff like that. But now with the new code, I don't think you can do that. You're going to have to build a new safe room like, like Don's talking about.
One more question.
Thank you.
Y'all, y'all welcome to retire. If y'all, if y'all get ready to get back, yes. Personnel matters, so we'll now enter into executive session. We've determined from executive session, we'll call the meeting back to order. We want to consider action items discussed in executive session.
I mean, maybe we approved the resignation and hiring as provided in the personnel section.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed. We've got the second consideration.
There's nothing on that one.
Mr. President, I made the motion. We tabled to a special call need for the additional items on the personnel fact.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. Next item business, we have approval of minutes from the last meeting.
Make a motion. We approved the minutes of the board meeting from January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
So move.
All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. Next item is financial report.
We have a budget. We have a financial report.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed. All right, next item is, is what, I'm sorry Bernard, I didn't understand what you were saying about the considered agenda and how it had moved down. I understand what you're saying now. Going to get a motion to accept the considered agenda.
Do you have one board policy update for approval?
Anybody have questions about? And can you expound on?
The only change really on this board policy is that it's changing the days for the PD to start June one instead of July one. That way, teachers, when they leave school, if they get any PD in June, they could count it for the next school year so that it doesn't, they don't have to wait till July to start picking up PD days.
Make the.
Make a motion that we approve the board policy update.
Get all in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion passed.
And you've got some board policies just there for first reading. There's a few of them in there. And you've got some board policies just there for first reading. There's a few of them in there.
It's got, uh, the strikeouts through it. Same that one. This is just a bar rating.
Yeah, that's just for you to try.
There's no questions about that. Is there any future business? I don't know many.
I think we have the ARPS right there.
Do you have a, do you have information on that, uh, professor?
Well, I, I, I emailed Rondo today and she sent me some information. So Ronda, it sounded like y'all. Exhausted the list of things to spend money on with those funds. Is that pretty much? Correct?
I don't, I think, I mean, it's still a big chunk of money that's given and. It is very particular on how we can spend those funds and I think we get a lot of money. On everything we can think about.
So you think this is the best use of our additional S R funds and, and the best use for teacher retention?
And Ms. McDonald's, the ready for learns committee met to discuss.
Right, we made it October and, um, and that is, that's a function of the ready for arts community, the region. On A T A R P and the attendees, uh, that do need, um, take input. Um, about what they would like to see with funding that wants and most of the input was, was related to actually.
I, I just have one question on this. So once the teacher signs their contract and they're here, these funds will be distributed on September thirtieth. Do we have any callback on that? Um, so each teacher would get like a thousand dollars, but like. We've had the issue of teachers not staying their full contract. Do we have any callback or is it, once it's given, it's given and?
I think this is going to be, but all these S R funds have to be fully spent by September the thirtieth. Um, I think it's going to be, you're going to walk in at, whoever gets their money.
Gets their money.
You can't go back and pay us.
You can.
You can't go back and recoup that back to finance.
Okay, just in good, good faith, essentially.
And this isn't just teachers, this is all employees, right?
Any more questions about that?
So we would take into account teach new staff that we know we potentially might need. Correct?
Well, it does say that any or all of these categories may change.
Okay, okay. Okay.
So that, that amount might change.
Okay, we make a motion that we approve the S R funds as presented.
All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, the same side. That motion passed. Got any board to board press for it? Got any future business? There's no other.
And that's just a reminder, the board meeting for March was moved up because of spring break.
All right, first not even, not any more questions. We've moved to adjourn. Going to get a move. Got to say it. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in the same side.